Let's go ahead and get started. We wish to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I will note for the record that currently Commissioner Jones and I are present in the Nat UHill Room, and we hope that Commissioner Thomas will join us and take over in just a minute. We'll start today's meeting with our statement. "We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC." And before we start with department updates, we do have a proclamation today. Commissioner Jones?
A proclamation in recognition of Parkinson's Awareness Month. Parkinson's disease, which affects up to approximately 20,000 people in Indiana and nearly 1 million people in the United States, is a chronic and progressive neurological disease caused by a lack of the chemical dopamine in the brain. And Parkinson's disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States and has an estimated annual cost of $51.9 billion per year, split evenly between medical costs and non-medical costs such as lost wages and caregiver time and expenses. And whereas it is important to educate Hoosiers about the symptoms of Parkinson's disease, including tremors, rigidity, and bradykinesia or slow movement, postural instability, shuffling gait, speech and swallowing disturbances, cognitive impairment, and dementia, and difficulty with fine hand movements. And since not everyone with Parkinson's disease has all the associated symptoms, careful diagnosis is essential. And research suggests that the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of environmental and genetic factors, and currently there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease.
And there currently is no objective test to diagnose Parkinson's disease, and available treatments are limited in their ability to address patients' medical needs and to remain effective over time. Volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. Increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim our recognition of April as Parkinson's Disease Month in Monroe County and April 11, 2024 as Parkinson's Awareness Day in Monroe County, proclaimed this 10th day of April 2024 by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. And I want to acknowledge Liz Fidel and her support for and providing us with the information for this. Liz lost her husband Al recently to Parkinson's, and I know that she is a strong, strong advocate for what needs to happen in the future. So at this point, we'll move on to department updates. Let's start with Ms. Kelly of the Health Department.
Good morning. Good morning. Just a few updates. So local wastewater surveillance for COVID, RSV, and influenza from March 4 until April 4 show very low concentrations of all viruses. The Indiana Department of Health dashboard also shows continued decreases in COVID and influenza. Our public health clinic has vaccines available for all ages. They also provide wellness screenings and infant safe sleep education for free. You can call 812-353-3244 for more information.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I would like to point out that today at the clinic, they received gun locks that are available free to the public. This is to help maintain safety within the home, and this was made available through monies from the American Rescue Plan Act. So this is a new addition to what we're able to do in terms of public health. Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
Next on here is Martha Miller from our Soil and Water Conservation District. Good morning, Ms. Miller. It's nice to see you.
Good morning. It's good to be here. I gave an update last night at council, and so I'm like, hmm, how do I make this more interesting since I've already done a lot of this? But some of it's going to be repetitive, so if you've already heard it, you know, listen to a podcast while I talk. First of all, I want to thank you all for the proclamation in advance of our 80th annual meeting, and it was a huge success. We had 71 people in attendance, and the speaker, Hunter Smith, is predominantly known, I think, by most people as a Super Bowl champion. We had him come because of his passion and love for small farms and agriculture and renewable agriculture as it moves into the future. His talk was amazing, but most people were really impressed with holding the Super Bowl ring. He passed it around. Everybody there got to take their pictures or see it, and that was really cool. Commissioner Thomas was there, and I think she enjoyed getting to see it as well. One thing that you have before you is a copy of our 80th annual meeting brochure, and in that we do some quoting of the original transcript for the actual formation of Soil and Water Conservation District in Monroe County. When we were prepping for this meeting, I started digging through a lot of old boxes and found the original transcript. Yeah. And I was fascinated by what I found, and I wanted to share that with you and the public. In 1942, when the district really started trying to be formed, it was predominantly landowners in the Stanford area and the Bean Blossom area that pushed to get it established. During that hearing in 1943, it was open to the public, as all public hearings are for establishment of things, especially, you know, with it being state. What was really fascinating to me is that they actually requested two women in the audience to give testimony, and then they asked for a young FFA member to give testimony, and he deferred to the FFA president at the time. What really struck out and stood out the most to me, though, is that the issue's still the same. And one of the things in the booklet that really just kind of took me to another place was Monroe County residents and politicians have always been waymakers and role models across the state. The original founders of this conservation district were farmers, businessmen and women, wives, mothers, young adults, and people from all walks of life, and they came together because they saw and believed in a better Monroe County for future generations. That message's still the same today, and it just stuck, struck with me, you know? For 1943, who would have thought? People just don't think about that, I don't think. So there was that. The other thing that really come out of all of that was that crop lands were being washed away by the incredible amount of flooding that was happening then. Their argument in establishment of this district was, first of all, let's find a way to keep our crop land secure, but if it can't be crop land, then let's cover it up and make it into pasture. That was before they really understood a lot of what we talk about with soil health today. Secondly, if it couldn't be pasture and was still washing away, then let's put it in forest because that'll secure the ground a little better. So their thought process was still the same 80 years ago than it is today. Keep the soil where it belongs. Now, in moving forward here, some of the things that we're getting ready to be into or are into because of what we do, there's a packet in front of you for a free soil testing. Any Monroe County resident, doesn't matter where they live, can get a free soil test through us right now because of the generous funding support of the Lake Monroe Water Funding Community Foundation. So I have these. I have some extra ones with me if anybody in the audience would like one or anybody up here. They're totally free. Normally, they run people around $25 to $35 through us to do it, but till June, you can get one free one. We also have decided, the board made a decision, to bring back the selling of our repurposed rain barrels. We did this the last time, probably six years ago or so. These are completely 100% food-grade safe. That doesn't mean you can use the water to drink, but the barrels are food-grade safe. They're recycled or repurposed by a company out of Chicago, and we'll be taking orders for those through mid, mid-end of April. We will be at the Garden Fair this coming Saturday at Switchyard Park, and we will have a display set up where we'll have all this information. We'll also have the bags if anybody wants soil testing there. And we are partnering with Hoosier Hills FFA to promote and encourage their plant sale, which will be coming up at the end of May. And if things went as the students and advisor hoped, we were able to provide them with some free native seeds to start, so they should have some decent native plantings as well. And make sure I've got all my notes here. I think that's it. Oh, you have an updated business plan as well there, so that's it. Any questions?
Yes, I was wondering for the free soil sample, is, should anyone using that be within the Lake Monroe watershed?
No. Originally, that was the target area, and we did that for about a year and didn't see the results that we had hoped, so the community foundation and Lake Monroe Water Fund opted to open it up. So it's actually open to any resident in Brown, Monroe, or Jackson County. Monroe County Soil and Water is processing all the samples through our office and our account with the lab, so, but no. We really strongly encourage people in the Lake Monroe watershed to do it, but yeah, it's for anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So they can call your number to get this, the soil sampling?
Yes, yep. They can stop by and see us at the Garden Fair. We'll have them, but we have these at our front desk, and they can just pick it up and take it, and then they can drop them back off, and then we get them to them. And they don't have to stop with one, but they have to pay for the others, so.
I'm sorry, I have another question.
Sure.
Do you know exactly what this soil is being tested for?
Yeah, I can do some of them off my memory. I don't have them with me. Nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium, organic matter. There's six things, so I'm forgetting two of them. Basically, they're really random, or not random, they're really standard testing for the basic nutrients, and what we're looking at or hoping to understand is people who are treating yards, gardens, or even larger-scale places will consider not treating as much when they realize they don't need that because their soil already holds that in capacity with, that's what we're hoping for.
Very good. Thank you.
And we also got a packet of Black Eyed Susan?
Yeah, the Black Eyed Susans are, yeah, yeah, so. And I do have, I'm going to skedaddle because I got stuff to get done at the office, but I do have a few of these if anybody wants some. You want one? But we have several, so. I think that's it, unless anybody's got anything else.
No, thank you for coming in and sharing this today.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Y'all have a good day.
Thanks. Next, we have Christine McAfee with probation. Morning.
Hello, good morning. As you said, I am Christine McAfee with probation, and I sent a couple of flyers later last week. Is it, there we go, perfect, thank you. So I'm here this morning to let our community know that with the JDAI initiative and the amazing support from the commissioners and the council, we are able to offer a couple of programs for community members. The one that you see in front of you is a partnership with PALS, which is people and animal learning services out on the far west side. This is for an adult, parent, caretaker, and a young person ages about 12 to 17, and this is a ground experience, so there's no writing, but it's really working with the innate nature of horses who, my understanding, I'm not a horse person, but my understanding is they're super perceptive to people and the energy and your mood and kind of what's happening with you, and they can be very empathetic, and they can help adults and young people start to identify emotions, start to realize when maybe they need to practice some self-regulation, what does that look like? How do I do that? It's a 12-session program. Last week, when I sent you this, we had 10 spots available. Today, I'm here to tell you that we are full, but we also have funding to do this in the fall, and fall being probably August. If anyone is interested in learning more about this opportunity, my contact number is on this flyer. You can reach me by email or by office number. Again, it is for a young person and an adult, parent, caretaker. They don't have to be system-involved. We are working really hard to provide community resources that don't require involvement in the youth justice field. So if you have interest in learning more, I would love to talk to you about it.
Yeah, this is a wonderful program, and I hope the community will fully support it. It would be nice to see it expand a bit.
Yeah, you know, I was so pleasantly surprised at the interest that we have so far garnered. As I said, we had 10 spots when I sent this out last week, and by Monday, we were full. So I think there's a lot of interest in this. As you know, JDAI loves to support community partnerships, so as long as the community says this is something we're interested in, we are more than interested in supporting it.
Well, I'd like to point out that this is being supported in part at least through the bonus money you've gotten because of the work that you've done.
Yes, because of the work the community has done, absolutely.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much for joining us and for sharing this information today.
Yep, I have one more, if I could quickly. We have two opportunities. The second one, I think there could be a flyer for that, but I'll go ahead and start talking. The second one is called the Parent Project. Yep, there you go, perfect. It's the manual the hospital forgot to give you. We have partnered with a local youth-serving agency, Nancy Hughes Family Solutions, and we are providing a parenting support program for those raising adolescents, again, between that 12 to 15, or 12 to 17 years of age. This is an educational, manualized, evidence-based program, but it also is designed to provide support to families. When parents are struggling with their, you know, with raising children, sometimes it can feel pretty isolating, and part of this goal is to help parents know you're not alone. We do have resources available, and as a community, we want to support your efforts in raising, in raising your kids. We also know that three hours is a really long time for parents to be able to manage to get away from their families, and so as an incentive, we are offering a $20 gift card for every session participants attend. It's a Visa gift card, so there's no expectation or requirements on what that is spent on. It could do some, you know, it could support transportation costs. It could buy dinner for your family if you're going to be gone, or something just nice for yourself if that's what you want to do. Again, it's a 10-week program. It is beginning April 24th, yep, April 24th, and my contact number is on the flyer, and I would love to talk to people about this wonderful opportunity as well. I would love to talk to people about this wonderful opportunity as well.
Comments? Commissioner Jones?
I'm always happy to see work done with families. I think that's something that's underappreciated.
Well, and I know, would like to note too, that on your flyer, it indicates that dinner will also be provided.
Heck, yeah, yeah, you know, we, JDAI world, we truly believe if you feed them, they show up, so.
Especially over the dinner hour, yes. Fabulous, fabulous news. Thank you, thank you for joining us.
Great, thank you for the opportunity.
And I see that Mr. Lavery has his hand up also, from our airport.
Greetings.
Morning.
Okay, you've got audio, great. Just wanted to give a little airport update about our Eclipse Day function. It was, we had a, we had a very, very busy day. It was interesting. We really weren't sure what was going on in town. We had arrived at the airport pretty early yesterday, and it was a busy day for the Monroe County Airport, but we kept texting, because everybody was wondering if we were gonna be able to get home, and it was interesting, because there seemed to be quite the contrast between what was going on in the roads around the community in south-central Indiana and what was happening at the airport. We had, we had over 100 transient aircraft arrive over the eclipse period, and it was quite a busy day, because the bulk of those aircraft actually arrived between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. So it was very busy all at once. Things quieted down just before the eclipse, and about 2:20 is when the departures happened, and it was really amazing to watch that, because there were some planes that were already at the airport before Monday, and within about two and a half, three hours, all 100 of our transient aircraft had departed. It was, it was really something to see, and I had some pictures to share. I don't think the share screen is working, but that's okay. Well, I can try it really quick. It's not working. Here we go. It's not gonna work, and I'm not gonna try it. It's just gonna slow everything down, but it was wonderful. We had a fantastic event, there were no, no abnormalities, no issues. The air traffic control tower, I wanna commend those folks. They, they processed 200 operations in about the course of four hours. It was, it was amazing to listen to, and as we get the audio recordings, I'm gonna see if I can somehow put those online for people to hear what they were dealing with. It was, it was amazing. Our two FBOs at the airport, Cook Aviation and BMG Jet Center, they worked together flawlessly. They got all those planes, not just, you know, landed and parked, but fueled, and they ushered and helped support the customers that had come in. We had designated a viewing area on the, like, the grassy field at the airport that we kind of referred to as the park, so that was our viewing area to get people away from the movement of the aircraft. We had a food truck there. It was just a wonderful event, and I'm so very proud of the airport, because, you know, from Monroe County Airport, or actually, honestly, any other airport to handle that kind of influx in such a short period of time with really just one main runway that was operating was truly phenomenal. So I'm very proud of the airport and all of our airport partners, and I don't wanna forget our volunteers from the Civil Air Patrol, and we had one actually also from the clerk's office, I believe her name was Laramie. She volunteered to come out, and she worked some, some gate security for us, and so thank you very much to Laramie. That is all I have.
Well, I'd like to congratulate you on such a well-planned day for the eclipse. I happen to live a couple miles north of the airport and saw a lot of really interesting planes.
Yeah, with the most interesting one, I believe we had was, it was called a Boeing Business Jet. We refer to them as BBJs, and it's actually a Boeing 737 airliner that, instead of having 150 seats on it, it has maybe 10 seats. It's quite luxurious, and they flew in at 10 o'clock and brought their 10 best friends and flew back out right after the eclipse. That was really interesting to see that.
Very good.
I saw your pictures last night and the short videos and watched those. I was amazed at the number of larger airplanes that came through.
Yeah, right. It was, it was amazing where they came from when the weather turned south last week on the forecast for the Texas region, as weirdly when we saw the influx of the turbine-powered aircraft making reservations for elsewhere. So I think they intended to stay home, but, yeah, it wasn't working out for them, so they were able to afford to come on out to Bloomington, and we were, we were more than happy to have them. It was, it was quite the day for the airport.
Well done, well done by everyone. Thank you, thank you for joining us. Is there any other department that has an update today?
Morning, Mr. Crider. Commissioners, Richard Crider, Facilities and Fleet, Monroe County, working with RQAW, put out bids for a cooling tower and freight elevator for the Monroe County Convention Center. The deadline for those bids was this morning at 9:45. They were received by County Legal, and Jeff Cockrell's gonna open those for us this morning.
Yes, we received four bids. Yeah, we received four bids. I think there are two different bid packets, so we'll see if they're all bid on both of them or not. So the first is from HFI Mechanical and Building Solutions, and out of Bloomington, And they had a bid for bid packet two of $471,471. They also had some bids for alternate one and two. The second bid is from Heflin Industries, again, out of Bloomington, Indiana. And their bid is for, again, for bid package two, $471,000, plus they have bids for alternative one and alternative two. The third bid is from American Elevator, out of Anderson, Indiana. And they are bidding on bid package one, which I assume is the elevator, for $147,500. And the final bid package is from Otis Elevator, out of Indianapolis, Indiana. And their bid is for $237,859, and that is also for bid packet one. I think at this point, I ask that you take this under advisement. We'll have Richard look through them and work with our office to just make sure they're all, bid all the documentations there appropriately, and we'll bring you a recommendation, hopefully in a week or two.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Grass with us here?
Commissioners, I have with me Transitional Team Director Cory Grass. I have an announcement to make for you regarding the RFP for the CMA Monroe County Jail and Justice Facilities. A request for proposals was issued on March 8th and due on April 4th. There were three respondents, Weddell Garmon Smoot, the Skilman Corporation, and F.A. Wilhelm Taylor Brothers Construction. Jail Transitional Team Director Cory Grass and myself will be conducting interviews with the three firms in the Nat U Hill Room on April 16th, beginning with Weddell Garmon Smoot at 9:00 a.m., followed by Skilman at 10:00 a.m., and finishing with Wilhelm Taylor Brothers at 11:00 a.m. The Nat U Hill Room will be open to the public. We anticipate a formal recommendation of construction manager to the Commissioners on April 24th. Do you all have any questions?
No, it's just exciting to see this actually moving forward.
Mr. Grass, any comments?
You did so well, good to go. Second one he said. And I'm excited about the progress too. We are taking some giant steps here, so very happy about that.
It is a big step, yes. Thank you, thank you for working on this.
Thank you.
Is there any other department with an update? I don't think we've ever had this many. Nice to see you, Mr. Gibbons.
I missed you guys, it's been so long since I saw you, I had to come in today. We wanted to give an update, because we had the jail inspection, and just give you a little bit as to what, what the inspector said about the facility itself, but real quick, some statistics at the facility as it stands. We have 200 current inmates, 180 bed, or, and our secure bed count. We have 169 males, 31 females. In the last 48 hours, we've had 12 bookings. In the last 48 hours, we've had 24 releases. We have 168 felonies and 25 misdemeanor right now. Some of the main charges that we currently have in our facility, too close apparently, is possession of controlled substance, domestic battery, criminal confinement, possession of methamphetamine, criminal recklessness, intimidation, it just, and then your basic violations are parole, probation, failure to appear, stuff like that. Facility-wise, the jail inspectors gave us high marks as it pertains to cleanliness and operations. He said, he stated that it's one of the cleanest facilities that he has in the state, which is a kudos to everybody that works in there, you guys, the council, everybody working together. He met with various members of the women's and men's dorms, and they spoke very highly of the culture change that came in. Again, a kudos to everybody involved in making that happen. And he's officially, he said we satisfied our obligations as it pertains to the jail standards. So that is my update from the jail.
Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I appreciate hearing this, and it's, it's nice to be, have, to be an outsider affirm what's going on in there. That's really good. Congratulations to you and everyone who works with you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. It's really a huge team member.
And the last time you were here, you talked about the fact that you were fully staffed, and that is also very, very encouraging.
That is still the case, that is still the case. We have six part-time employees. We just interviewed 14 more applicants, so we're keeping things in the hopper in case we need it as well. So we're trying to stay ahead of it.
That's amazing. Kudos. Thank you.
Thank you.
For being here. Okay, number eight on my scorecard here.
I'm gonna be the last, I guess it's better being first. Just real quickly, just wanted to update, you know, obviously, we had a major event here in the county here on, on Monday. Just a little bit of information. We had, I, I think the only thing we can say about the eclipse is that we plan for the worst, hope for the best, and that's what arrived here, is we had zero issues in our arena of business with the eclipse. It was, it was kind of odd, actually, for all of the planning that we did and all of the, the information and the intelligence we had gathered of how that this was gonna pan out. But I, but I, but I think it has something that has to do with the messaging here, that this county's been very strong about, you know, what this would bring and how the public can help us, and they, they stood up in a big way and did that. We stood on the jail roof and watched all of this unfold, and I was struck by the fact that we're, you know, people were down there walking, they were in, they were in all different little corners watching, and it just seemed to be a pretty happy event for everybody. We heard the cheers go up when totality was hit, we heard the cheers go up when, when, you know, the first peak came back out. So it was, it was an event that I, I think we, we had to plan for the worst-case scenario, and I'm just really, really excited to tell you that we had no issues there. As a matter of fact, I gathered a few statistics. We went back about a month or so and looked at the previous Mondays from a 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. period, a 24-hour period. We looked at our call volume, and our call volume actually for Eclipse Day was well below what the previous time periods for those Mondays were. So I don't even, I don't even, if I remember correctly, I don't have the stats, so give me a little bit of latitude here. I don't think we had anybody even brought into the facility until well after the eclipse had done its thing and passed on. So to give you an example of, of how well that actually went, we started with our staffing from about 1:00 in the morning till about, I'm sorry, about 6:00 in the morning till about 1:00 in the afternoon, we had 24 deputies out during that time period. From 1:00 to about 4:00 in the afternoon, we had bumped that up to 37. From 4:00 on, we dropped down to our normal staffing levels at 7:00. So we were able to, to dispatch those folks back to their residences and cut down our staffing to normal staffing levels within one hour of the eclipse. So just a big kudos to Monroe County and the people that came here, and that entire event went off without a hitch. And I gotta, you know, shout out to our partners here in law enforcement and fire and the county at the EOC. They welcomed us in, that's where we staffed our command center, and, and everything went as smooth as it could possibly have went. Any questions?
Well done.
Yes, very, very well done, and thank you for all the planning. This didn't come off without all of the hard work that went on before.
It's been about a year and a half of meetings pretty regularly about, about this event, so.
And our emergency management
Yes.
team was part of all this too.
Absolutely.
I acknowledge them. How many of the, the staff that you talked about that were out on the roads or came in to help, how many of those were the reserve deputies?
We had some reserves, I don't have the exact number, but I, I'm gonna guess maybe five or six reserves officers were out there, or at least staged to help in, in the event we needed some additional manpower, but fortunately, we never had even, we ever had to tap that resource.
Very nice, very nice. I wanna thank the reserves also, because they, they do a lot in terms of volunteering to help the community.
Yes, yes.
They really do. Well, thank you for coming and sharing this with us.
All right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else that, any other department that has an update? If not, let's move on to public comments. This is for items that are not on the agenda. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, and if you wish to share something with us, please state your name and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. That's both in-person and on-teams. Seeing none, let's move on to the next item on our agenda.
Move approval of the minutes for March 27th, 2024.
I'll second that. Did you have any comments or corrections?
No, I don't.
I didn't either, so call for vote. All those in favor approving the minutes for March 27th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, April 10th, 2024. And pay
I'll second that, and we have our auditor here. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable claims docket for today, April 10th, 2024, totals 3,274,861. The payroll docket. The payroll docket for April 5th, 2024 includes $1,475,141.45 in direct costs and the remaining $628,695.99 for indirect costs for a grand total of $2,104,437.44. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I will note that when we have things like our jail fully staffed, that increases our payroll cost, but that's a good problem to have. Very good problem. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, April 10th, 2024, and payroll for April 5th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Next item, please. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. We did have a report from Waits and Measures that covered the period from February 16th through March 15th, 2024, and I'm sad to report that this will probably be the last report like this that we get from Mr. Souders. He has just been so thorough, so meticulous with everything he has done, and I'm really sad that he's moving on to something else, because I really appreciate reading what he does, and it's given me great appreciation for sort of the little things that we all assume somebody's taking care of, but we don't know who. So, thank you, Mr. Souders. So, now we'll move on to new business.
Court, move approval of a court-appointed special advocates grants, or CASA. Fund name, GAL slash CASA. Fund number, 1213, in the amount of $83,738.
I'll second that, and we have Ms. Gregory here to talk with us about this.
The department is just requesting approval of the 2024 matching grants and capacity grants. They were applied for and awarded. All grant payments will be issued to Monroe County CASA through Monroe County, where the pass-through. So, the county's match portion of $214,500 is appropriated and be expended out of Fund 1114. So, per CASA, the application and award letter are considered the contract, so we won't receive any official contract. This is just requesting your approval of that grant, the two grants.
Questions or comments? The guardian ad litem often comes into play when we don't have enough CASA volunteers, and so those volunteers actually make a difference in people's lives, but they save taxpayers' dollars. So we really appreciate the CASA work that's done here. And I know that at least one county employee who is also a CASA volunteer, and so I want to applaud her work as well. Are there any, is there any public comment or questions on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the court-appointed special advocates for CASA grants. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of an amended community kitchen MOU. Fund name, ARPA. Fund number, 8950, in the amount of $400,000.
I'll second that, and we, I don't know if it's Ms. Gregory or Mr. Cockrell who's going to be talking to us about this.
I can handle this. We did an agreement with the community kitchen. This does not affect the amount of funding they are going to get out of ARPA. It's just when, when the auditor staff, working with Baker Tilly, reviewed some of the documentations, that number of 446,015.21, they calculated to be like $441,000. And so instead of trying to figure out the discrepancies and then make the amendment to the contract, our concern was to making sure it was over $400,000, because that is what we have granted to them, and this is how we're, how that was going to work. So, we just put in the over $400,000 so that it's reflected in our documentation is accurate.
So that the amount isn't 400,000, it is over 400,000? Is that the way it should be stipulated?
It's over 400,000. We are, our grant is for 400,000. So we just needed them to demonstrate that amount within that line, and they've exceeded that. It's just a matter of how much they exceeded it between either 46,000 or 41,000. And so, we're just changing this to over 400,000 so that our documents reflect accurately what is factually true.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Is there any public comment, questions? Thank you for bringing this to us. At this point then, I'll call for a vote on the amended community kitchen MOU. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-09, emergency management and highway surplus property.
I'll second, and may I, Ms. Gregory?
Morning again. I'm actually request that this item be tabled until the next meeting, if that's possible. I have been communicating with Mr. Kreider, who was in contact with emergency management, who, the radios belong to emergency management, and they've since found that some may still be in use. So we're going to rework the resolution, remove the radios, and I'll come back to you with just the highway infrastructure that needs to be retired.
Okay, so I move that we continue this until April 17th, 2024. Is there any comment, do you have a comment on that? If not, call for a vote to continue Resolution 2024-09 until April 17th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. See you next week on that then, thank you. Next item.
Move approval of ratification of Title X Services Amendment. Fund name, Futures Titles 10. Fund number, 8126, in the amount of $50,000.
I'll second that, and we have Ms. Kelly back with us.
Yes, this is just an amendment to the original Title X grant award. This grant cycle did end March 31st of 2024, but this additional funding will just help to essentially cover what we have been short during that grant cycle period.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on ratification of Title X Services Amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Next item. Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Move approval of Apex Benefits Business Associates Agreement. Fund name, Self-Insurance. Fund number, 4700.
I'll second that, and we have Ms. Purdy here to talk with us.
Yes, good morning. This is actually kind of more of housekeeping, in that this is an agreement that we have with Apex Benefits, specific to HIPAA-covered entities and ensuring the protection of our private health information. And so this agreement outlines requirements for sharing private health information between Monroe County Government and Apex Benefits tracking and sending the data, and how everyone is going to be notified regarding security breaches and any other responsibilities that may occur because we do share confidential health information.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I appreciate the fact that you're going another layer deeper on protection, I really do. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Apex Benefits Business Associates Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of a prosecutor's agreement with Rich Hansen. Fund name, County General. Fund number, 1,000, in the amount of $10,000.
I'll second that, and we have Ms. Turner Keane with us. Good morning, it's nice to see you.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm presenting this on behalf of the prosecutor who's currently at a conference. The proposed agreement before you is an agreement between the prosecutor's office and Rich Hansen, who is an attorney with 20 years of criminal experience and was the former juvenile prosecutor. It would secure his services to provide 250 hours of instruction at the Indiana Police Academy. As background, the IU Police Academy serves as a satellite academy for Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, so it allows mostly the cadets there to get the same type of training that they would if they went to the academy in Plainfield. It provides 600 hours of education in about 90 different topics pertaining to law enforcement, including investigations, procedures, federal and state criminal, or federal and state law, individual rights. They do a mock trial scenario for the cadets, which allows them to get familiarity with the courtroom and kind of get a testifying experience before they actually have to testify. And the prosecutor's office has historically been involved in this level of instruction, which is beneficial because it allows the participants of the academy not only to develop and maintain and understand a good criminal law, but it also provides them an understanding of how our local office works. So, you know, when you get a case, how does it process through this office? This is beneficial because a lot of the cadets who graduate IU Police Academy also then continue their careers either at BPD or the Sheriff's Office. So this agreement secures Mr. Hansen's instruction for the academy. He's done it in the past, he's been instrumental in it, and they would just like to continue doing such.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
That does sound quite valuable.
I appreciate the fact that Mr. Hansen's willing to continue to provide this as a service to, to the community, it sounds like. Is there public comment on this? Did you have something else you wanted to add?
Me?
Okay, all right. Seeing, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the prosecutor agreement with Rich Hansen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval of Elite Electric for jail office data lines. Fund name, Cumulative Capital. Fund number, 1138, in the amount of $2,035.
I'll second that, we have Mr. Crowan here with us from TSD.
Good morning, gentlemen. Everybody's about to deploy. This one's pretty straightforward. Some of this small space currently being used by supervisor's staff, jail command, or forecourt of the jail, it's made very purpose, pushing in any services through the program. We have to relocate supervisor's office to another area. We harbor a run below on office space. They don't have a bunch of available rooms, so the space that the supervisor's being moved into was previously storage, so it only had electrical, no ethernet connections in that room at all. So this agreement is to have Elite Electric come in and run two data runs, one dedicated for a PC, the other dedicated for a pub phone through EMT conduit. Since this passes through common areas accessible to inmates, we can't have exposed wiring, so this is going to be encased in EMT metal conduit. Elite Electric will do all the work with the exception of terminating the connections at both ends, that'll be the responsibility in my office, but all data jacks and associated plates that go with it will be provided for Elite. And this is a one-time cost of $2,035.
Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
When I was reading through things, I was like, they found any space at all in the jail to do something?
Not anymore, they're going to start putting folks on a roof.
Insulated tents or something?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, very good. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Elite Electric for the jail office, contract with Elite Electric for the jail office data lines. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Thank you, Mr. Crow.
Thank you very much.
Next item.
Move approval of an NDOT letter of understanding for an unofficial detour due to a closure of State Road 48.
I'll second, and we have Ms. Ridge.
Good morning. This is probably one of the most unfavorable items on here, so. NDOT will be closing State Road 48, a mile and a half east of State Road 43, for a bridge deck overlay. It is to close around May 1st and be closed for approximately 70 days, which is around August 1st. They do post an official detour route, which is State Road 43, State Road 46, I-69, and State Road 48. However, not everybody uses the official detour route, so the unofficial detour route will be Vernal Pike and Ord Road. NDOT agrees to reimbursement or accounting for the cost related to damage repair on the listed unofficial detour route. So this is the agreement for that.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I, I'm curious, isn't that part of Vernal Pike that was just repaved?
So, actually, the Vernal Pike that they're using is the part that we have in our community crossing award, or community crossing application, which actually was awarded at 10:00 a.m. this morning. We were trying, we just found out about the road closure with 48, maybe three weeks ago, a month ago, we've been going back and forth. We're actually, we have crews out there preparing Ord Road to go ahead and use our budget to pave that section of Ord Road, just because we know it's really rough and people are going to use that, even though it's not the official detour route. But we're unable, we were unable to award or do anything with the bids that we opened last week for that section of Vernal Pike, because the CCMG awards had not been announced until this morning. So we're trying to coincide it all together and possibly go ahead and pave the Vernal Pike during this time, just so it's not, it's in bad condition, so that's why we chose to pave it. So we were trying to coordinate both of them, and in my work session is actually awarding the Ord Road project to actually be paved next week to beat that May 1st deadline, so.
Wow. Wow. So, if I were going from downtown out to Ellisville also, which would be impacted by that, I would probably go out Arlington Road. So if there's any damage to Arlington Road, will we also be reimbursed from the state on that?
So the State Road 48 to 43, I would say most would be going to Owen County and going 43 that way. If you're taking, going downtown and going 46, I don't think it'll be affected as much as like I-69 and then the cut-through of Vernal Pike, Ord Road. Of course, you do have the State Road 45, 46 bypass that went under construction yesterday, and I think that lasts for over a year. So a lot of that traffic will probably be using that Arlington Road.
Okay. And later I would like to hear more about the community crossing.
Sure.
Grant, yeah, so, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on NDOT letter of understanding, unofficial detour for the closure of State Route 48. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Signal Construction Company Extension of Service Agreement. Fund names, County General and Motor Vehicle Highway. Fund numbers, 1,000 and 1176. And no amount, oh, the amount is listed in the agreement.
I'll second. Ms. Ridge again.
So this is just basically to extend that service agreement. The Highway Department uses Signal Construction for on-call services for repairs to our traffic signals. And then the Parks Department also uses it for their flashing beacons and high-intensity activated crosswalk, it's also known as a hawk signal, for pedestrians, and they use it as an on-call basis. The original contract spells out that each department is responsible for their own expenses paid out of their own budgets, and this would extend the contract to May 2025.
Very good. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I don't either. It seemed very straightforward, reading through all this. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Signal Construction Company Extension of Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, two to zero. Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordnance 2024-13, Taylor Rezo.
I'll second, and I'll second, and we have Mr. Myers with us from the Planning Department. Good morning, Drew.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, let me share a screen here. All right. This is the Taylor Rezone from RE1 to LI. This is one parcel. It's 9.08 acres in Van Buren Township, Section 3. It's located at 6610 West State Road 48. And the owner is Brian Rental Incorporated. And the applicant petitioner is Dusty Taylor of Taycon Construction. So the request is to amend the zoning map for 6610 West State Road 48 from RE1 to LI, or State Residential 1 to Light Industrial. The petitioner intends to rezone this property to establish a business center, business industrial center on the property to operate the use of a general contractor with heavy machinery sales. A use determination was performed for this property upon the petitioner's request, and their description aligned with both of these uses occurring at the same time, which would trigger the need for a business industrial center. From the petitioner, he stated, "I wanted to build a shop to house equipment and have a parking lot to park equipment in to rent or sale equipment out of. We also provide services as excavating and hauling." In communications with the petitioner, it was stated that the equipment that they'll be selling or renting isn't like your typical large-scale equipment, like dozers or anything like that, but more or less attachments to those types of equipment. And I'm sure the petitioner can speak more on the specifics of their business plan as well. There's also a letter from the petitioner in the staff packet. So the petitioner is the owner of the existing business named Taycon, which describes itself as excavation specialist serving Bloomington and South Central Indiana. Having both uses of general contracting heavy machinery sales, as I stated, would require the land use classification of a business industrial center, which would be permitted in the LI zone. Here's the location map. That hatching you see there is the airport noise sensitivity area. And it is an area that the airport director has stated that they are expecting no more residential development to occur in that noise-sensitive area. But commercial activity is fine. So here I included the definitions of the uses that we've been talking about. We have general contractor, heavy machine sales, and business or industrial center. Again, these are included in the packet as well. And then here we have the descriptions of the two districts here, State Residential 1 and Light Industrial. Here's the current zoning. State Residential 1, the light green. We have RE 2.5 to the south and the airport to the southeast. A small polygon of general business to the northeast. An agricultural reserve there as well to the northeast and north. And then ME stands for mineral extraction. There is an active quarry operation to the north of the site here. The Monroe County Comprehensive Plan has it designated as rural transition. And here are the site conditions. On the map, you'll note that there are several expected sinkhole or cars features located on the property. The MS4 Coordinator has reviewed the preliminary plans for this project and stated that the property is located in the Cave Creek Critical Watershed, and that development of the site will require a drainage plan that complies with Monroe County Code Chapter 761 and official watershed release rates. And additional water quality treatment measures can be required based on the proposed use. And she added a recommendation that a CARSS report be submitted before or during site plan review. Excuse me. I have some aerial imagery here of the site, currently mostly wooded. There is a small residence on the property that I do believe is vacant. You can see the quarry operation to the north here, and then the airport to the south down here. Here we have the letter from the petitioner stating their request, as well as the consent letter from the current owners. And here we have the preliminary plans. These are just very much of a draft of what's expected by the petitioner. So they have two phases of development here. Phase one being on the right side of the screen or the east side of the property, a potential build site for a structure and gates as well. And the configuration you see is trying to accommodate the existing sinkhole features. So Monroe County Zoning Ordinance does have a chapter, Chapter 829, that does protect cars and sinkhole features, does provide buffering within sinkhole conservancy areas. So we will be taking a close look at those during the commercial site plan review process. We also have letters of support. These were provided during the plan commission hearing. These are just signatures of support that were provided to the petitioner. Here we have the current uses for the RE1 district. As you'll note, they're fairly limited. P stands for permitted, and a C stands for conditional, meaning that it has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for review. And here we have the use table for the Light Industrial zoning district. So a lot more uses here, which you'll note. Business or industrial center is down here in the bottom right-hand corner with multi-use. It is considered a high-intensity use, and it is permitted in Light Industrial District, as is heavy machine sales and general contractor. So planning staff provided a positive recommendation to the plan commission, and that was in February, which was then forwarded to this, which that body then forwarded this petition to the Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation by a vote of eight to zero, with one condition of approval. One, the petitioner submit a CARSS report for review by the MS4 Coordinator prior to site plan approval. I don't take any questions.
Yes, when I was looking at the places where the petition does and doesn't match the plan, at one point where it says open space to protect environmentally sensitive features as development occurs has been highlighted in gray. So is it expected that there will be disturbance of sensitive features?
Yes, so I added that in gray because of the conditions of the site, being that it is fairly tricky to make sure that we meet the buffering requirements of the site with respect to the cars and sinkhole features. But being that there is a condition of approval for a CARSS report during the site plan review process, I am confident that, working with the petitioner and the stormwater team, that we'll be able to minimize any disturbance at all to those features, given that they are to be protected via Chapter 829.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, I would like to just hear from the petitioners. Mr. Cockron may need some coaching again on what to do. We hear from them, and then we open it up as a hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, you open up as a hearing, and you have 15 minutes for people to who are in approval of this, and then 15 minutes for people who are not, each limited to three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So please sign in and then state your name as you go to speak.
I'm Dusty Taylor, owner of Taycon.
Hi, Mr. Taylor.
Hi, I'm Eric Kamen, with Brian Rental Inc., and this is David Kamen.
Welcome.
The owners. Am I allowed to give you guys anything? Like, we have sheets. Okay.
Should I sign in? I'm not going to be speaking, but I can sign in. You're owners.
This is our site plan. You already saw it, but we just wanted to, you guys have it. And it's also all of the signatures we've got from the neighbors.
Okay, nice.
So did you have some questions? What was?
I don't have any questions about what was presented, if there's other addition. In addition to what was handed to us, is there anything else that you would like to say in support of your petition?
Grew up right there on the west side of the airport all my life. My family has owned and operated excavating business since long before my time. My son will be a fourth generation, so we're native to the area. This, I currently run out of my grandfather's place because we're grandfathered in. I would like to abide by the county's rules and regulations and actually have a business property that's zoned correctly for what I'm trying to do. I don't want to grow up big. I stay pretty family-oriented, you know? Not hiring a slew of people, but I want to keep everything pretty tight. It's close to my home. And there's an airport right there that's, they don't want anybody living there. You've got the quarry behind you, and there's a huge shelf back there. I've talked to all the residents around there, which I know several of them because I've grown up there all my life. Everybody was in supportive of what I was trying to do. So I'd like to build me a shop there so I could house my equipment and rent attachments for skid steers, you know? And in the winter, when things get slow, we work on equipment there. We will repair equipment. That's where I will sell something, get something different. So I'm going to be able to sell there, but not like a used car lot, you know? So.
Yeah, maybe I should add, but, you know, I think, I hope everybody's, you know, driven by the site. And it's, it is an eyesore. It doesn't look great. And, you know, having Dusty build his business around here would, you know, really just change that whole entire banner. You know, it's the entrance to Rogers Group. There's a lot of traffic flow. And, you know, it's, it would be very nice for Dusty to come in and start, you know, refreshing that corner. But, you know, he's, he's our excavator. He's also our friend. And he also is getting his pilot's license across the street, so, you know, I think it's all in one. You know, we think he's going to do good things over here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Depending on approval, I would work with the, get the site plan to make sure that we avoid all cars features and everything during this process. And, you know, that preliminary site plan can easily be altered once we get all the studies done and everything. But I just don't want to work out all that until I can even know that we can proceed with it, so.
Reasonable. Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
Well, I have, this is probably a great use of this land. I think it's really sad that so many trees apparently will be lost. But they probably would eventually anyway.
One, one thing I'll add to that is that the airport has had to trim those trees twice in my lifetime due to the ceiling level of planes coming in and out. For one. And for two, if you come out Ord Road and look west, there, you have to pull way up to see because it is overgrowing out towards the highway and creating a blind spot. So this, and there is a slew of dump trucks that come in and out of there. So, I mean, I just, I think it would help and benefit that too, and really clean it up, so.
Yeah. I also want, I wanted to ask, do you also work on agricultural equipment?
We don't do much with agriculture at all, other than lawn seeding and installation of new grass. That's about, about as agriculture as we get. So mainly just civil work, site work, water, sewer, utility, drainage, retention ponds. I do a lot of site work in Monroe, for Monroe, and for the city of Bloomington. I've done for everything, so.
Thank you.
And what are the plans for the existing house that's on the property?
There's one existing house.
Right.
That will be pending approval in the site plan. That will be done away with in a future. And then a new building put in with a couple little offices in there.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Very good. Well, at this point, I'd like to open the hearing. Is this quick? Okay. And we have 15 minutes for anyone who wants to speak in favor of the petition. And if you do, please state your name, and you have three minutes to speak. You can, you can rest for a few minutes if you want. And that includes people who are online. Okay, seeing no one who's here to speak in favor of the petition, I'll move to those who wish to speak against the petition. Same thing. There's 15-minute total time limit, and each person who wishes to speak has a three-minute limit. This is for people both present in the net U-Hill room and online or virtual. Seeing none. We'll call a close to the hearing. And this is where I need some coaching.
Closing the hearing, they have a chance to rebut anything that was said, which I'm guessing wouldn't take long. And then after that, you would, you would move to, or you would vote on.
Okay, well, is there anything else you wish to add to this?
Nothing.
I agree with Commissioner Jones that I think this is a good use of this property. So at this point, I will call for a vote on ordinance 2024-13, the Taylor Rezone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Thank you for coming in today and waiting for so long. Thank you very much. Next item.
Oops. Move approval of ordinance 2024-17 Hopkins Rezone.
I'll second, and we have Ms. Crisilius from the Planning Department with us. Good morning.
Good morning. Please let me know. Could you see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so this is a rezone request for a property off of Old State Road 37. So it's 7540 South Old State Road 37. It is located in Clear Creek Township, Section 8. The petition site is one lot of record made up of three parcels. It totals 7.1 acres together. So the petition site is currently zoned, it's split-zoned, Agricultural Rural Reserve, or AgRR, and Suburban Residential, or SR. The property is located within the Rural Residential zoning district of the Comprehensive Plan. And as you can see, all of the properties adjacent are also considered rural residential. The site is mainly flat, so slopes under 15% as we can see. The property is currently developed with a single-family residential home and one accessory structure. So the petitioner has filed a three-lot administrative typee subdivision to reconfigure the petition site and two adjoining properties. They are proposing this, so this is, this is what they've applied with. And under the zoning ordinance, we cannot create what is shown as Lot 2 in its current configuration, split-zoned. So they could adjust their lot lines, or they could request a rezone. They have chosen to pursue this rezone. They state due to the natural terrain of the land, there's an old line of evergreen trees, that it's sensible to them that this feels kind of like Lot 2. And I have some good examples that shows overall what's happening with this administrative subdivision. So to remain split-zoned, so as is the Lot 2, the proposed lot would need to meet the AgRR minimum lot size, which is 2.5 acres. So currently, they're proposing Lot 2 as being 1.39 acres. So this rezone request is for the one area of Lot 2 that is currently zoned AgRR. So the rezone request is only for 0.62 acres of Lot 2. So this zooms in a little bit. This shows this lot 2. This shows this Lot 2 and how it's split zoned and the locations of the current structures. So here is the proposed Lot 2, just overlaid on aerial image imagery. So we can kind of see that, that lot configuration that what they want and those evergreen trees I was talking about. So what they're proposing, if this is approved, is that Lot 2 would be fully zoned suburban residential. So jump back to some aerial imagery. This is the current configuration of the property. So our petition site is Lot 2 and Lot 1 and Lot 3 are the properties involved with this administrative subdivision located to the north. Here it is, the current existing part, property lines with the zoning. So we can see that the petition site is already split zoned, suburban residential and AgRR. So here is an example of that area of their proposed lot lines and the current split zoning. So the area highlighted in yellow is the area that's technically not feasible that they're wanting to rezone. And this is what they're proposing. This would comply with the zoning ordinance. And then I just wanted to address, in this administrative subdivision, we do see three other areas adjacent that are split zoned. These are areas that we would address under the CDO, so the Future Zoning Ordinance. So just run through some photos of the petition site. This is the existing residential home on the, the site. This is the existing driveway off of Old State Road 37. It's a kind of a view of the back of the house. This is just part of the back of the yard. So here's the backyard of that Lot 2. And this is starting to get into the area that's zoned SR, I'm sorry, AgRR that would need to be rezoned. So here we can kind of see that line of evergreen trees. That shows kind of illustrates, there's kind of a natural boundary area. So just west, I'm sorry, yeah, west of the, those evergreen trees. Now we're looking at that proposed Lot 1 in the back where the petitioner is hoping to build a new home. So the petitioner owns this property. It was determined that the property was one lot of record. So using other properties to the north, they would like to create, adjust those lot lines so that they could build a new home for themselves. So this would be that area. And my lighting just went out for some reason. So now I'm sitting in pitch black. Okay. So looking off of Old State Road 37, there are adjacent, these are the two properties to the north. So we're looking at the driveway to the church, Souls Harbor, which is one of the properties involved with the administrative subdivision. And then the gravel driveway is an, is an existing driveway from that small northern property. So this is that northern, one of the northern properties that's involved in the administrative subdivision. So there, under the rezone, the Highway Department Project Engineer Ben Ayers did request that the, there were right-of-way activity permits submitted for all three of the lots that would be involved in the administrative subdivision. So under the rezone, they were requesting right-of-way activity permits. Those have been submitted. One of them was denied due to driveway spacing. The petitioner is, is going to work with the Highway Department. I believe they've filed an appeal because they're wanting to keep all three driveways. For this rezone, planning staff really feels that this is kind of an issue that could be worked out with the Highway Department no matter what, and that we don't necessarily see this as, as great of a concern that would hold this petition back. So we've included this as a condition of approval under our recommendation. So the plant commission heard this and they forwarded a positive recommendation of a vote of eight to zero. They did tweak one of the conditions just a little bit, and I'll emphasize that in a second. So they did forward a positive recommendation. So staff's recommendation, we recommend approving the rezone request from AgRR to suburban residential for the 0.62 acres based on the findings of fact with the following conditions. Number one, receive approved right-of-way activity permits from the county highway department as necessary, which is the tweak by the plant commission. And also, number two, record the administrative subdivision SAD 243. So this rezone would only go into effect with the recording of the administrative subdivision. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I don't think I do. It's a bit complicated.
Yeah, it is. And I was at the highway hearing for the driveway issues. So I've heard about this from another side. That, that hasn't been resolved at this point. So we'll have to be working on that. But at this point, I don't have any questions at this point, but if the petitioner is here and wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name and sign in. Or if you're available virtually.
I'm here.
Okay. I'll note for the record that the petitioner is here. I'm just stating it so that it, it gets recorded and doesn't have anything additional to add to the petition. With that, I'll then open the hearing on this rezone petition. Again, we'll allow anyone who wishes to speak in favor of it to come forward. You have a total of 15, there's a total of 15 minutes for those who wish to speak in favor with a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing and we'll go to anyone who is against the approval of this rezone. Same conditions. Seeing none, we'll close that part of the hearing. And is there anything else you wish to add or ask about at this point, Commissioner Jones?
No, there isn't.
I don't either. I think that this is really reasonable, that we need just a single type of zoning for this lot. And so with that, I'll call for a vote on ordinance 2024-17, the Hopkins Rezone. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Crisilius, for your hard work. Okay. With that, that's the end of our regular business. We have no appointments. Terms of announcements, first of all, I want to thank everyone for their cooperation on Eclipse Day. That was, that was quite amazing to hear the report from the sheriff's office that there were fewer incidences in terms of issues during that time. I'll remind everyone that you can vote early. Election operations, 302 South Walnut Street. During weekdays, they are open from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Beginning Saturday, April the 27th, you can vote from 9:00 till 4:00. And again, on Saturday, May the 4th. Then early voting will end at noon on May the 6th with Election Day for the primary on April 7th. You can also apply to vote absentee by mail, but that will end, I believe you have to have your application for that end by April the 25th, by the close of business, basically. There is free COVID testing available at the County Health Department at 119 West 7th Street, as well as at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. We are still accepting applications for boards and commissioners. I will remind the public that we hold six virtual office hours each month. You can get onto the website at co.monroe.in.us. Click on the calendar and you can see when someone is available to speak with you. There are still blood drives. This next one is Thursday, May the 9th, from 1:00 to 6:00. And Friday, May the 10th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Ivy Tech, Shree Hall. And we thank both the folks at Ivy Tech and Red Cross for working with us on this. Now that the eclipse has passed, if there were people that realized that they maybe wished they were on the Monroe County Alert Notification System, you can join again by going to our website. And a reminder that we have extended the Assistance Fund for county residents in need of assistance in paying for their rent or utilities. You can contact your township trustee for that. And we also have initiated a rural housing repair program and we're now accepting applications from low and moderate Monroe County homeowners. You can contact your township trustee for information on that unless you live in the non-urbanized portion of Perry Township, in which case you need to contact our office. And Ms. Purdy, can you remind folks of how they would do that? Sorry to put you on the spot, but it's in your brain better than it's in mine, I'm sure.
They just need to contact our office. Either you can call at the 812-349-2550, or you can email commissionersoffice@co.monroe.in.us. Make sure you put rural train, rural repair in the subject line and we will reach out to you and get the information to you and make sure that we can get you taken care of.
Thank you. And I will remind folks that we do have our broadband challenge going on. That will end shortly. So if you have not started the challenge, I urge you to go onto the website, look for the information about what to do and how to submit information. It will require that you do a speed test in three consecutive days in terms of your download and upload speeds, but there's information on how to do that at, again, at our website, co.monroe.in.us. Do you have anything to add, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, with that, we are adjourned. We will return on April the 17th, 2024, here in the NatU Hill Room. Did, what? Uh, well, it's 10:35. If we come back at 10:45, will that work for everybody? 11:30. Do not, I haven't slept much in the last few nights, sorry, at 11:45. Thank you. I need the support of you guys. (end of transcript)
Why is the sheriff here?
To call to order this meeting of the Work Session of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is April 10th, 2024, and I will note for the record that Commissioner Jones and I are present in the Nat U Hill Room. So, looks like we have something from E. Sensenstein and...
Actually, Molly, I believe, is going to take this.
Okay.
Molly, are you where?
Ms. Turner-King, are you handling this Ordinance 2024-18, Amendment to the...
Yes, I am. So, this is a, the proposed ordinance would amend Chapter 287 to add two categories of election workers to that code section. Pursuant to IC Code 311.572, the Commissioners set the per diem for absentee counters and couriers. Based on job descriptions provided by the Clerk's Office, the absentee counter is responsible for processing all ballots received by mail, in person, or otherwise not on Election Day, which includes verifying the signatures on the applicants and the ballots before they're opened. And the courier is responsible for transporting any needed material to poll sites from Election Central. Both of these election workers work on Election Day. I think they're required to report beginning at 5:00 a.m., and then they remain until their Election Day duties are satisfied. The amendment provides for a per diem rate for both of these individuals as, or both of these categories of election workers, as well as a trading rate. The per diem for the absentee counters is the amount currently reflected in the salary ordinance, so it's not to exceed 135. 135 is what's currently in the salary ordinance. The per diem for the couriers is based on documentation provided by the Clerk, so it's not to exceed $150. Similar to Section 8 in Chapter 287, the proposed amendment sets a not-to-exceed amount, and then the Election Board would set a specific amount within that range.
So that was pretty fast. So, I, do you have questions or comments?
Um...
No, go ahead. Well, I wondered why the absentee ballot counters start at 5:00 a.m. I can understand why the couriers might, but why do the absentee counter...
And I don't think I can answer that question. I think our election supervisor is here, and she might be able to answer that.
Good morning, Kaylee.
Good morning. So with the counters, they have to arrive at 5:00 a.m. so that they can get their oath and then go through any training that they have to go through before they can begin the process of opening the ballots and processing everything and getting it ready to go back to the back to be scanned. We start opening the ballots exactly at 6:01 a.m., and so they have that hour to get everything in, make sure that they're set up, everything's ready to go as soon as 6:01 hits, and then they also have to go through their oath before the process can begin as well.
So the training occurs that day?
Yes, it occurs that morning, which it's not an intense training for that one. It's mainly just getting them through the process of teaching them how they have to do everything and the order that it needs to be done, and for it to go back into the back to be scanned.
Okay. Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
That's a very long day for people, isn't it?
Yeah.
It is. So, Ms. Turner-King, has, has this been, that, the Ordinance 2024-18, has this been vetted, reviewed, approved, whatever, by the Election Board?
It has not been. It was on the agenda at the last Election Board meeting, and the item was tabled. I think it was tabled in part because I think the Clerk's Office will have recommendations on further amendments to that section, and so we were trying to efficiently just have them review it once. I'm not speaking to the other amendments, because statutorily, this is the only amendment that I need to really make to the ordinance or propose to the ordinance. I think our election supervisor is here to speak toward Section A, which deals with other election workers, such as the inspector, the judges, the clerks, the sheriffs, and those, that, those election workers.
So on that, I had sent it over to Molly and Angie, and was hoping that it would be forward, forward, forward on to you guys, which I believe it was. And so on that, we have had multiple poll workers that have called us and have stated with the raise on the absentee side, it's not leading to the same for the Election Day workers. We have had a few that have already said that if it is not raised, at least some, they will not be working this election because of the fact that they are working 13, 14-hour days during the day. And they also have to come the day before to set up, and they have to come the Saturday before the election to pick up all of their materials, and that is all by state guidelines of how we have to hand out all the materials and the way that everything has to be set up. On the chart that I had sent in for you guys to review, on the inspectors, they are currently making 165 for the day, which brings you about $10 an hour for them, if you are doing it by the math, but since they are per diem, we wanted to give you guys some, some suggestions. And this is coming from our clerk. We're looking for the inspectors to go from 165 to the 200 for the day. Judges, 135 to the 175 for a day. Clerks and student poll workers would be going from 135 to 150. Sheriffs, 115 to 120. And then our counters would be 135 to 175. Our couriers would be 17, uh, $17 an hour, which that would actually be the per diem. We thought they were going to be within that absentee, so they would be also the 135 plus the, um, sorry, the 150 plus the mileage for them.
And as, you're not paying people at the maximum of the range at this point?
Correct. That's why we wanted to wait until after this meeting to see about have, potentially getting the increase to that 200 and then making the changes.
But what I'm asking is why aren't they already paid at the maximum of the current range?
On that, it would be more of the clerk that would know more on that end, since she's the one that sets what each one of them pay. I don't know fully on that, so...
Okay. I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative here, but I...
Yeah, I understand.
I would have thought that it was the Election Board that set some of that.
I know that they come together to agree on it.
A point of clarity is the code section 287 does say that the Election Board will set within the range.
And has County Council heard this?
The Council hasn't heard the proposal to these election workers. Statutorily, the Council sets the per diem for the absentee workers. I think logically, what the code section does is that any, any election worker that works the day of is set by the Commissioners. Their, their per diem is set by the Commissioners, and the Council sets the per diem for individuals who work multiple days prior to the election. So the Council did just adjust the rates for the individuals who work prior to the election, but they have not heard this proposal.
And what are they paying the, the current absentee workers?
I'm sorry.
The current early voting workers, I guess?
Yeah, so the absentee board would consist of early voters, travel board, and individuals who work in like a satellite office, which is the Clerk's Office. So those individuals have already been set by the Council, and they increased, what they did was they created a resolution that created three categories of absentee workers, the category A, B, and C. And then there are staggered rates with $33.20, and I forget what the third one is, 25. So in essence, the absentee leads are making $33 an hour, clerks are making 25, and travel board is making 20. Clerks make 20, and travel board makes 25 plus mileage.
Sorry, I'm trying to quickly do math in my head as well, but, but the supervisors at, right now, don't work like a 16-hour day almost.
Well, current timesheets are reflecting that the supervisors are working approximately anywhere between 2 and 6 hours.
So we're being asked to increase without a recommendation from the Election Board?
The Election Board has not made a recommendation on the per diems yet, correct? And I'm happy to ask the Election Board to call a special session to do so. Their next meeting isn't until the first, I think it's actually April 30th. It's usually the first Tuesday, Thursday of the month, but I think it's April 30th this next one is. But I can ask them to call a special session.
Should we table it?
I would just remind you that, that since our ordinance and our code requires the Election Board to change the rate, and they're not at the top of the rate right now, I, I would recommend that, that we actually consider they would have a special meeting no matter what, since they're not paid at the top of the rate right now. Even if you made the change, would it, would they, does the Election Board feel that it needs to be moved up? Those are questions that only the Election Board can answer, and so I, my suggestion would be... And so my suggestion would be have the Election Board meet early, give you a recommendation on what they think it should be, and then what they're willing to do, right? And let them kind of guide you through this election issue, which is kind of a role.
So that would, we would be asking them to have a special session, make a recommendation to us, and then we would vote on it. But that needs to occur pretty quickly, because this is a time-sensitive issue.
I can call the members of the Election Board today, see when they can meet, and try to get a meeting before the next commissioner's meeting.
And I would suggest that if they're not meeting till the end of April anyway, their recruitment and getting these people online will be hindered if this issue is not resolved until then, and they have to be part of a resolution.
So I would ask that we, since we don't have a motion on the floor yet, can we just ask that this be brought back to us after the Election Board has made a decision, or made a recommendation, I guess it is?
I can talk to the Election Board and then place it back on a regular session for the commissioners.
Oh, that's how I would like to have it handled.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah? Okay. I just don't want to do anything that's counter to their wishes at this point. Yes, please.
Hey, Kaylee, I just want some clarification, sorry.
You're fine.
The information on these sheets, is this what you want it to be?
Yes, so this is the one that we had sent to the county council as well when we were taking care of the absentee. So they have seen these numbers, they know what they look like, and then we brought them as well today for you guys to review.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm.
Yep. I can be. I think this is a Jeff and Molly tag team item. Or, yes.
So this is an amendment to personnel policy to create flex time policy for the exempt employees?
Correct.
Please go through and explain this.
So the proposal is to add a benefit time to the personnel policy that would be a benefit to individuals who are classified as exempt employees. In essence, what it would allow is if an exempt employee works beyond their required hours for a week, they would be able to bank time to be used later. So for example, I'm an 80-hour employee. If in the two-week period I worked 90 hours, I would put 10 hours in a flex time bank, and then I could use that 10 hours elsewhere. Currently, what usually happens is that exempt employees have to flex within the pay period, and this would allow them to flex outside the pay period that they earned it in. The policy says that each year on April 1st, an exempt employee's flex time bank will reset, so there is somewhat of a time limit for them to use them, so they're not just holding on to them forever. It would also require that flex time be approved, the use of flex time be approved by the elected official or department head in the same manner as any other benefit time. I think that unless you have something further that, Mr. Cockrell.
Maybe just a little background on to why this was thought up, is that, you know, we had, and I don't want to point fingers, but we had a jail commander who came in, put a ton of time in, and there was some concern about him getting burned out. And it's, I mean, from my perspective, this is nice, but it'll never affect me, because I have enough time built up that this is just another bank of time that I'm going to have left over when I leave here that I'm not going to get paid for, right? That's all this. But it's really more designed for kind of newly, new people who are in exempt positions, who come to work here as they are getting their feet settled, and as they're, you know, there's a lot of front-loaded work, particularly with the new elected official and new administrations, to get kind of everybody up to speed. And so this is kind of there to help provide them a little bit of time that they can take off, even though they can't necessarily do it in the two-week time period. That's kind of the, that's kind of what got this conversation started. And I think we've got prosecutors and public defenders who also have maybe not that concern, but the, hey, we've got a big trial coming up, and I'm spending a lot of time preparing for the trial, and then we get through the trial, and then I need a few days to decompress, well, but that's maybe not within that two-week period. So it's kind of those kind of situations that's really what drove this, particularly when we have new elected officials come on, and we saw the type of energy and effort they were putting into, you know, making cultural changes within their departments and, you know, and then worried about them, hey, they can't keep going like this forever. They're really going to need some time to work it off, and we don't give them vacation for six months, so that's kind of the, why this idea started.
And I just want to add to that, too, that there are some exempt employees, again, I'm like Jeff, I've been here forever, I will not need this, but we have some that are much younger, have less time here, and they have to put in time, maybe they're short-staffed, maybe there's trainings, you know, they're having to do things that they don't get compensated for. I mean, it's just kind of part of our, you know, what you're considered to be doing. But we also don't allow people the flexibility that are exempt employees to take that time at a later point in time. Right now, they have to do it within that two-week period, and a lot of times, it's too late to make any flex time at that point. And we have run this past the Board of Judges and the prosecutor, and I believe that what we're wanting to do today is to have this approved officially today as a policy amendment in our personnel policy. And I believe that might also be why Chief Deputy Parker is present, because he has staff that are, as Mr. Cockrell noted, who are extremely impacted by something like this.
And I would just note that we would then bring it back next week in kind of our formal form that says, here's the chapter, here's the section numbers and all that, so that we would have that documentation.
So do you want a motion today?
I think that the, I think that we have had a lot of conversations, and I think that would be appropriate to give an indication, yes, we're going to approve this, and then we'll bring the formal document to you next week.
I would also note that, just to add a bit more detail on the policy, unlike comp time, this is not a benefit time that gets paid out if the employee leaves. So if someone leaves, you know, before they have, they can use their flex time, it's not going to have a financial impact. And this builds on the premises that exempt employees are paid for their services or expertise rather than an hourly rate, which is why flexing outside of a pay period is beneficial. And I do think it benefits a lot of, like specifically the attorneys, because I will say, I've been the prosecutor, you know, who's done a jury trial in your second week of the pay period, and you put in all these hours, and then at the end, there's no time to flex. So it provides a benefit in those scenarios.
I'm very agreeable to this, so I'd like to move that we amend personnel policy to create a flex time policy for exempt employees.
Second.
Do you wish to speak on this, Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Or Chief Parker, sorry.
Just a real quick, basically saying the same thing that Jeff and Molly said, and they've really listened to this and helped us with this. And it's exactly as everybody is saying that, you know, when you come in there, and we've seen the effort that's been put there, and it came up in particular with our three captains, that as we're trying to change culture there, part of that was training, and we have to, so we have to do their jobs, and they have to come into training, and if you're not able, if you're not able to take that outside of the pay period, it's just gone. And it, I just wanted to come and thank the commissioners personally, and I know Commissioner Thomas didn't hear, so I'm making sure of thanking her, too, to consider this, because if you just keep go, 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 and there's no break in that, and I'm not trying to sit up here and sound pitiful and whiny here, but if you don't have some time to de-escalate yourself, it's pretty hard to go through your day there and knowing that this isn't laying out there as a way for you to kind of escape from that. So I appreciate you very, very much considering that, and I really appreciate the work that, you know, I first brought this to Angie, and then Jeff and Molly kind of picked up on it. So I want you to know that from the jail there, there's a lot of appreciation coming to the commissioners for this.
Well, there's certainly been a turnaround in what's going on in the jail, too, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there any other public discussion, comments? If not, I'll call for a vote on the amendment to personnel policy to create flex time policy for exempt employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to zero. Next item, we have something from Ms. Rich. Get down to page ten.
I was getting ready to say good morning, but good afternoon now.
Oh, well.
So earlier in the regular meeting, you agreed to a contract or an agreement with NDOT concerning Ord Road being an unofficial detour route for the road closing. We wanted to improve Ord Road before that May 1st commences, just making it better for the public that do choose to take that unofficial route. So we opened bids, quotes, actually. We opened quotes on April 5th. We received a quote from EMB Paving. We had sent out actually four, we sent the quote packets to four individual companies. We only received two, and then one letter from a contractor that was not going to submit. So I am asking for EMB to be awarded, they were the lowest-received quote. They would like to begin the project next week, so I was seeing if we could get this approved and then ratify it on next week's meeting. And then if you want any information about the community crossing, information after that or during?
Let's do that after, that's okay. Get this taken care of. Can I, can we go ahead and make a motion?
I would just say, I don't think this needs to come back to ratification. This is an emergency. It's a project that we've already discussed today at an earlier meeting. I think if you guys just wanted to go ahead and approve it and not have it come back to ratification, that'd be perfectly fine.
That would be great, and if I could get a signed copy today, and that would be, give them officially, for them to be able to start Monday.
Okay, well, I move that we award paving project to EMB Paving LLC for paving on Ord Road. This is fund name Motor Vehicle Highway, Fund Number 1176, in the amount of $116,572.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. With the quarry being right there, and all those huge trucks use Ord Road all the time, are they going to be rerouted, or will they still be able to use Ord Road?
They should still be able to come, the paving is from the quarry entrance west to Vernal Pike.
Okay.
So they will still be able to come out the quarry and go straight out to 48.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other, is there any public discussion of this item? Seeing none, I call for a vote on the award, paving project, EMB Paving LLC for Ord Road as described by Ms. Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, two to zero. So it sounds like we're good. Is there anything else for today's work session? Oh, you were going to talk about the community crossings.
So I know paving is a huge interest in the county, as it is for all of us. We submitted our community crossing application in January. The council actually put into their budget the match, which as, they increased it to a $3 million worth of projects, a $1.5 million match locally, and then the award would be $1.5 million. It was announced this morning at 10:00 a.m. that Monroe County did receive, that application was approved and accepted for the award of the full $1.5 million. We have kind of stayed ahead of this, so we did not delay paving. So we actually opened bids two weeks ago. We did not award anything. Everything was subject to the community crossing awards. We've worked with NDOT on this, and they suggest that so you don't lose that month or two of getting bids ready, getting them out, getting roads prepared. So we did that, we've been holding on to them, so I'll be bringing that to you along with the NDOT contract. I just wanted to let you know, the roads that are included into that is about 26 miles of road, and I want to also stress that we could not do these applications without the council assistance. They've helped us, this is the second year in a row. Our paving budget in our MBH is just approximately $1.4 million, so as you can see, that's our match. If we don't have the council assistance, we will not be able to apply for these grants in the future. So I really want to, you know, work with the commissioners and the council on how we move forward for 2025 with our paving program. We want to, we've had, this will be the second year that we've done really well, made a difference in the county, but it can go backwards just like that if we don't keep up pace. And I do consider it a huge public safety issue. If we can't take care of our roads and use funds that way, then it is a problem. So anyway, Mount Pleasant Road, Monroe Dam Road, Valley Mission Road, Sewell Road, Rockport Road, Brummets Creek Road, Ramp Creek Road, Popcorn Road, Vernal Pike, Chambers Pike, Zikes Road, Woodland Road, Oak Ridge Road, and the entire subdivision of Shelburne Woods. And that equals 26 miles of roadway, about $3 million worth of projects.
Wow.
Yeah.
Having driven on a few of those roads not that long ago, I'm glad that they're.
Yeah, and we prioritize, and we also hear from the public, we investigate those roads, and, you know, I know you guys receive a lot of emails from requests. If we try and stay a year in advance, depends on how the winter weather affects our roads, but if we throw in one road, then another road gets thrown out. So it's a really tough call to make, and it just definitely can't make everybody happy, and we don't have enough funds to take care of the 700 miles of roadway that we have.
And you've been able to get the maximum on these community matching grants for several years now, and I would urge the council to continue to provide that matching money, not just because of safety, but, you know, I go to the meetings of the Bloomington Chamber, the Eldsville Chamber, and for the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, and these are things that are really important if we want to both attract and maintain current employers. This is part of the quality of life also for residences, and I fully, fully support any kind of effort on the part of the council to provide this funding.
And we do reach out to all sources that we have. We utilize every budget, and we are required to do so to show that we are using every fund that we have available. We've even reached out to the RDC for road reconstruction funding assistance on some of the roads that are within their TIF, when you have a four-lane road like Curry Pike. So we are reaching out to every avenue that we have, so if anybody has good ideas, we are so open to listen to them.
I'll just agree with everything that you just said.
Well, I don't think we want to be holding bake sales to be.
No.
Get our roads paved.
That would not pave many roads.
No, no. So I do appreciate all of your hard work on these things. People don't understand that you're out there, you go and look at these things, you do assessments and...
I do, I try and stay involved, and I can't say this enough, I can't do it without everybody that works in the highway department, from our administrative staff to our superintendents, our assistants, our bridge crew, our stormwater. We all come together, we get these roads ready, so it is definitely a huge team effort, and I'm very appreciative of everybody, commissioners, council, but again, we can only do so much within our department, and we definitely need the assistance.
Very good. Okay, now, is there anything else for the agenda? If not, we will adjourn this work session. We will be back next week. We will be back next week on April the 17th. Thank you, everyone.